Calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call, please.
Ms. Angarola?
Here.
Ms. Bayless?
Here.
Mr. Becker?
Ms. Hale?
Here.
Mr. Hauptman?
Here.
Mr. Candela?
Here.
Ms. Sullivan?
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. We have two presentations this evening. The first one is going to be a presentation of our Diamond Awards. And a Diamond Award for our guests in the audience are given by staff members or administrators to outstanding staff who exemplify our core values. And our core values for Sparkle On are service, passion, advocacy, respect, kindness, love, equity, opportunity, and nurture. Each one of the letters in Sparkle On. So this month, we are recognizing a staff member from West Oak Middle School. She was nominated by her colleague and partner, Ms. Erin Grubb. So Ms. Erin Grubb is going to come up and recognize and award Barbara Padur the Diamond Award. So Ms. Scrub.
Barb exemplifies the Sparkle On values through her tireless service, boundless passion, and unwavering advocacy for her students. She consistently promotes excellence by providing engaging science lessons that spark curiosity and a love of learning. She nurtures opportunity by serving as the NJHS advisor, guiding students to develop leadership skills through community service projects. Her kindness and respect shine through in how she builds personal connections with each student, learning about their interests and circumstances to better support them. During volleyball games, she exemplifies the sparkle by energetically running the scoreboard and cheering on the team. She shows her advocacy for equity by providing incentives and recognition for all of the eighth graders. Her passion extends beyond the classroom as she willingly takes on coaching duties after school. She has been seen at many of their games, both home and away. And her infectious enthusiasm and selfless commitment to putting students first makes Barb a shining example of our Sparkle On core values in action every single day. In just her first year here at D76, she has proven to show all the qualities of an amazing educator, and I'm so lucky to call her a friend and my teammate. She is exactly what we need at our school, and I'm so grateful to learn from her every single day.
And just so everybody knows, Barb teaches eighth grade science at our middle school, and Ms. Rob Aaron teaches eighth grade language arts. So they're teammates. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you so much.
All right. And I think this is what you all came for. Our second presentation is the Diamond Lake School Learning Update. We provide tools and resources to showcase learning and progress and achievement and growth. And so I am going to hand the floor over to Dr. Berger, who is going to introduce our guests and participants.
Great, thank you. Good evening, District 76. On behalf of the Channel 76 Production Crew, we welcome you to a very special live episode of The Diamond Dish. What started as a fun, creative way to bring broadcasting to pre-K through second grade students at Diamond Lake School quickly developed into one of the many ways we show how we sparkle on. The Diamond Dish allows us to provide student-led communication service to our families to show our passion for learning each week. Students advocating for each other as they anxiously await their turn to anchor an episode and respectfully complimenting each other's work has provided us with a foundation of kindness and love for the moments that matter. By making The Diamond Dish an equitable opportunity for all students, we continue to provide a nurturing environment filled with new experiences. The Diamond Dish also supports social emotional learning as students of all grade levels work together, build relationships, and strengthen our community. Channel 76 would like to send their sincere thanks and gratitude to Diamond Lake School staff for being avid viewers and incorporating episodes into their Friday routine. Ms. Vicki Riley, AKA Canva Queen, and Ms. Lupe Flores for editing our videos and helping us produce final products. Mr. Eric Hanson for supporting and posting our work online. Mr. Eric Rogers for finding ways to provide us with studio equipment and filming equipment. And Dr. Peter Cunningham and Dr. Bhavna Sharma Lewis for being our golden ticket members, receiving our work through an early release of episodes and providing us with heartfelt feedback. The collaborative support of District 76 is what provides us with a foundation of our work at Channel 76. And now, live from DLS, it's Tuesday night!
Hello, District 76. Welcome to Diamond Dish. I hope you are ready for a great show tonight. I am Quinn McFadden, and this is my co-star Frankie May.
Oh, Quinn, thank you for the introduction. Yes, tonight's episode will be off the hook. While I sit here and think back to everything we've done at YAS during the 2023 to 2024 school year, I get a big smile and a warm heart.
Same, we had so many special events from the meeting. Johnny Appleseed, a new playground singing for the veterans, welcoming Princess Polly into our family, and taking off the field tricks and taking off the new brand new math program.
Yes, this year was loaded with new exciting things. Everyone loves coming to school, learning, and learning together. We can't wait to share some of our best highlights with you. We've got a great show for you tonight. Polly Crew is here to perform. Stick around, we'll be right back.
Well, it's that time of year again, and the school is wrapping up students to getting ready to walk across the graduation stage.
Moving from high school to college, middle school to high school, intermediate, middle school, elementary, intermediate school, and preschool to elementary school.
In honor of our Little Diamond Early Learning Program and the American Candle Club, check out these five-star graduators. Our preschool students are ready for kindergarten, and Princess Polly graduated with the blue ribbon of K-9 in Goodship.
Whether you are two-legged or four-legged, everyone at DLS sparkles with success. Through embrace, empower, and excel, we treat you as excellence. We celebrate each child and Princess Polly each day.
So little diamonds, are you ready for kindergarten?
Quinn, I think it's important for us to highlight our new math program. What a better way to learn about it from these two kindergarteners.
Totally, ladies and gentlemen, please us welcome Athena and Mason.
I know there was a lot of new vocabulary in the math program. Mason, can you tell us what happens to a number when you add? Excellent, you are so smart.
Now Athena, can you tell me what happens to a number when you take away? Excellent, you are so smart.
Now here's the real question. What is your favorite part of the new math program this year?
Awesome job kindergarten. Where it's at, thank you for joining us tonight. Music has become so important at DLS. The great new songs we have learned, the mixing of both English and Spanish songs. And the songs he hated to Princess Polly added so much love to our family.
We should like to include our show tonight with our very special musical guest.
Mrs. Johnson's second grade class is proud to bring us You've Got a Friend in Me and Friends Are Like Diamonds. For the first time, Friends Are Like Diamonds, we will be brought you in English and Spanish.
Mr. Kebler's friend Josh helped translate. They grew up in theater and choir together. When Josh's dad was in fifth grade, his family came to the United States. And the DLS was where he went to school.
That's amazing. His family helping with translate goes to show, once a diamond, always a diamond.
Ladies and gentlemen, Polly Crew.
Yeah, it's so cute. Thank you guys so much for coming tonight and for sharing with us. We really didn't think that the chicks could be topped from last year, but clearly, you always level up. So families, thank you so much for sharing your kids with us tonight. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the business meeting, but we understand that you might want to go to bed or relax. So feel free to leave. And teachers and staff, thank you so much for joining us tonight, too. It was such a pleasure.
Thank you.
It was so cute. Did someone video that? Was that video? It's serotonin boost.
Mr. Hanson, if you want to take a picture, perfect.
Maybe that. Okay. Okay, we will move on to our business agenda. The first item up on the business agenda is just reviewing the omnibus food agenda, which we will take action on at the May 26th, 22nd meeting. The next item up for act- is for action, and that is the personnel item. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have two new hires, one leave of absence, one retirement notification, and two internal transfers. No, not unless we do a presentation. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Candela? Mr. Hauptman?
Yes.
Ms. Angarola?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes. The next item on the business agenda is also for action. And it is approving the district leadership team contracts. Whereas the Board of Education has reviewed the contract proposals for the district leadership team for fiscal year 2024, 2025 school year. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the district leadership team contracts for fiscal year 2425 as presented below. May I have a motion to approve, please? Second.
Mr. Candela?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Angarola?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless?
Yes.
Mr. Hauptman?
Yes.
That motion is also approved. The next item is up for review, and that is the appointment of the school treasurer for the 2024-25 fiscal year and the school treasurer bond. I don't know, Mr. Rogers, if there was anything you wanted to talk about. Present?
No, it's just an annual item that we are required to do. And the only update is the district is now required to carry less of a bond for the school treasures. Instead of 25%, it now dropped to 10% as per the requirements. I'm still recommending we carry up a slightly higher amount. So it just saves us a little bit of money in the long run.
Sounds good. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, the next item on the business agenda is also for review, and that is the 2024-25 food service contract with Arbor.
Yes, first year with Arbor, it has gone really exceptionally well. They have provided, I think, a more quality meal and a variety of menu items. It's been the thing we've been most appreciative of. So when we first started our contract, we wanted to see a lot more salad-type options, a lot more variety for students. Right now, we have at least three options a day from an entry standpoint. So they've been very receptive of any feedback we've given them. Staffing levels have been good, and the partnership with Mundeline is working out really well. And we were just lucky to have a kitchen that's this close. So this is just a year, the first year of our renewal. We have a total of five years we can go with Arbor.
Great. Does anyone have any questions about that contract? Okay. And then the last item on the business agenda is also for review, and it's reviewing the student meal prices for next year as well.
Yeah, and student meal prices, we're required to set those according to the ISB pricing calculator. So because we didn't do a big increase last year, we have to go 30 cents this year. But none of that is applicable since we're still part of the CEP program. So students will still eat free breakfast or lunch. This would only apply if a student wanted a second lunch.
Okay. And are we going to communicate that out to families either at the end of the year or the fall? Just to remind them that meals are going to be free again?
Yeah, I think we'll do that in a back-to-school newsletter, and we will hopefully still have a couple more changes next year up our sleeve and the second year of Arbor, so we're excited.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, moving on to board discussion. Do we have any items for board discussion this evening? Okay, we did not have any freedom of information requests, notices, and communications. We have a number of things from CDAL. And then for D76 highlights, we have the Mayor's Cup STEM Challenge, the April moment of the month Administrative Professionals Day, Dia de los Niños, and the student recognition breakfast. Is there anything you want to highlight?
Everything was a highlight this month, and I just want to thank, and I'm going to do that more at the end-of-the-year staff recognition event. Sammy, Samira Calderon and Josh Somora were doing just an outstanding job for their first time putting together an amazing Dia de los Niños event last Friday. And it really was their brainchild in putting all the volunteers and coordinating all of the entertainment and the food. And then getting all the staff to volunteer and help was amazing, and the kids had a blast. So I'm definitely going to do a public recognition, but I just wanted you all to know that. So we'll put some pictures together in a slideshow, but it was a great event for the kids, and they enjoyed it.
It was really nice to see that on the calendar, because I'm sure it was a huge undertaking.
Oh, it was, yeah, and they just did an amazing job. So like I said, we'll do it publicly, but I wanted you all to know in support and everything else, as you know. We've talked about, but congratulations to the fifth-grade group that won the Mayor's STEM Challenge from the fifth through 12th grade competition. So that's been published in there, and that was shared out above. Yeah, a great month, busy month.
Okay, moving on to public comments and petitions. Do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items? Okay, then we will move. So there's two opportunities for public comment. At the beginning of the meeting, we give you an opportunity to comment on anything that's on the agenda. And then at the end of the meeting, you have the opportunity to comment on anything else. So that would be when you would do it. Yeah, exactly. Okay, then for others.
Just wanted to share out, we always love to invite the board and see you at our August fifteenth, our back-to-school institute days. This year, it's on August fifteenth, which is a Thursday. The luncheon is at 12:00, and then we'll have some type of welcome-back keynote speaker and then do an activity. So you are all welcome to attend that. We invite you to, so we'll send you a calendar invite, but we just wanted, I wanted to share that with you in advance. I know some of you have your own schools to open up and classrooms to set up, so I understand that piece of it. And then June 3rd, Triple I registration opens up, and the dates are in there.
Is there a theme for August fifteenth yet?
Yes, is it public or no?
It will be public at the end of the year staff party.
Okay.
And if you cannot attend, I promise to put it in some type of a celebratory email.
Okay.
Yes, there will be a date.
Do we have the dates for Triple I? Because I'm not seeing it. I see the registration, and I do see a tab, but I can't.
Yeah, I can't open it either. I'm sorry. Hiram, do you mind? I will give you.
It's not an attachment, yeah.
Okay, it's just, hold on a second.
The attachment.
So let, you could let Hiram know by June 1st if you're going Triple I this year. Let me give you the dates. It is the 21st through the 24th. The 20th is the pre-conference.
November 21st.
But the actual conference will start like that Friday afternoon, the 22nd, 23rd, 24th.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for adding that, Hiram. Okay, and the other items for others are the petitions from District Seventy-Five and One Twenty to withdraw from CDAL.
And as more information comes up right now, it's just in the preliminary stages, so I wanted you all to
Yeah.
see where they were at with that. I, you know, I don't know if it's because they're both going through transitions of leadership with Dr. Skengis as well. I mean, Dr. Myers and Mrs. Donan. So that might be waiting for them to transition. That's the only thing I can think of. I don't remember. Is that something David said? Because he was at the meeting.
I don't remember that.
I remember it was said that they wanted to kind of get, withdraw and kind of get the paper, get things started, but definitely wanted to wait to any, make any final decision. I don't believe that there were any specifics made, but I know that it was mentioned. Yeah, because when I saw it on the paperwork, I wasn't surprised, so I knew that we had heard of the tour.
Okay, we can ask him to clarify at the next meeting.
But that's the only reason I can think of is that, waiting for Dr. Myers' transition.
Okay, does anyone have any other others? No. Okay, then we will adjourn to executive session for the appointments, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity, and for collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
Mr. Candela? Mr. Hauptman?
Yes.
Ms. Angarola?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Nice shop, Dr. Berger.
It was fantastic.
It was great.
It's really fun.
You had quite the day.